Call.
Councilman Dealey.
Here.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Papesku.
Here.
Mayor Potemperi Dupin.
Present.
Mayor Reevesby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll begin with the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Leonard. As far as you're able, please stand.
Father Heavenly, thank you for your watch care over us and your guidance, and we pray for your guidance here in this meeting tonight as we discuss issues awaiting from the city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additional or deletional items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I have one item to add, which is receive and file the annual housing report. I'd like to add that items, and also would like to delete item number nine for the MOU with the groundwater at this time.
Okay. And we'll move rapidly to item number one, which is the second reading of Council Bill O-2015-03, Establishing Wastewater Collection Rates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last City Council, we had a first public hearing on these items, which is the sewer rate increase is a pass-through with the sewer treatment plant at the city of San Bernardino, where the city of Loma Linda, city of San Bernardino, and East Valley Water District have a joint power authority to construct and build and maintain that sewer treatment plant. And at the last City Council meeting, the council asked me to mail the letter out to the 34 resident or business owner that mailed protest letter to us, so I did that. And I also did a memo to all of you on the question you asked. So, and tonight we also have the director, John Klout, the director of the city of San Bernardino Water Reclamation Plant, he's here also to answer any question that the resident business owner have on this item. Thank you.
So the appropriate motion would be... That's a question.
Mr. Mayor.
I think what we need to do, let's see if any of the comments are... I don't see the comments about this.
No, it was just under the oral reports, public participation item.
Okay. So, we will back up a bit and cover the item that I missed, which is inviting the public to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, and we'll come back to item number one after we do that. So there are three requests to speak. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, then speak up after we get done with these three. But I'll take them in order that they are lying on the table. First is Marjorie Barakian.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marjorie Barakian, and I live on the southeast side of Loma Linda, just south of Barton Road, but adjacent to the train tracks. We've lived there 27 years. We've been having problems in our neighborhood, and I wanted to let the City Council know that. Repeatedly over the last month, our mailboxes have been broken into on the weekend, in particular on the Sabbath. Someone is stealing the whole block's mail. Our houses were built in 1988, so we're not allowed by law to have individual mailboxes. Everyone on our block and the blocks adjacent to us have gone to the post office and asked, "What can we do?" They say they don't own the boxes. If we want a stronger box, it would cost our block and each other block $1,200 to put in a stronger one. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Last summer, both prior to 4th of July and after 4th of July, on the weekends again, this was, to the best of my recollection, one was on a Friday, approximately midnight, and the other occasion happened on a Saturday night at 1:00 a.m. in the morning going into Sunday. We heard large explosions from our homes. I know many of our neighbors would have been asleep. They may not have taken the time to call 911. But my husband and I were both very concerned about what blew up. And we called 911. I realize the sheriff's office covers so many cities in the county, and they do their best. But no one ever came that night or followed up with phone calls or any other reports. And I want to remind the City Council, having lived here so many years, that under the railroad tracks for our neighborhood runs the Kinder Morgan Petroleum Pipeline. Now, I forgot that in addition to calling 911, I was supposed to call their emergency hotline and report explosions. I did not do that. And I'm here tonight because I truthfully feel that those explosions may have been practices leading up to last Wednesday's event in San Bernardino. So I'm asking the City Council... I don't know the last time the fire department did a fire drill for an emergency responding to this. And I don't really often remember how many years ago this was mailed to us. But perhaps it's time Kinder Morgan sent them out again to Loma Linda. So I brought my copy. I always keep it by the phone. It's taped on a wall. And I know what an outstanding job all the first responders did last Wednesday. But if someone in Loma Linda calls and reports an explosion, that is not normal in our community, and it should be looked into further. Lastly, we had a missing person in our neighborhood over Thanksgiving weekend, and the sheriff's department diligently came by helicopter looking for her and announcing who they were looking for, and we are thankful for that. But I don't understand why didn't we receive like a reverse 911 call from the city? Isn't that possible to let us know? Because she was evidently missing two nights. They came on the second night. And then my final comment is, and I've already contacted Congressman Pete Aguilar's office, the city of Redlands, the city of San Bernardino, and the city of Colton. And I got a very positive response to my idea. I'm only one person with an idea, but here's my idea. I do not think that shooters should be buried terrorists in our local cemeteries. And I have asked Congressman Aguilar's office to present a bill in Congress so that these two individuals don't become martyrs, their graves, and attract others to come pay homage to them. We have that wonderful little cemetery on Barton Road, Montecito. Our loved ones are buried there, veterans are buried there, and the victims might even be buried there. We do not want terrorists buried there. So maybe there's something collectively the city can do and our congressman can do to act on this. I think we have to act quickly because if someone's placed there, I think it's very difficult to get them moved. So thank you for your time and attention. I'm going to leave this with Pam, the city clerk, in case she wants to get copies of it so you know more about it. See, this is what happens when you're an old timer in Loma Linda. I'm going to remind everybody, in 1989, the Duffy Street in San Bernardino, this is a reality. That pipeline blew over there, and eight lives were lost. So it is, something has happened in the past, and we need to remember the pipe is there. Thank you.
Are there any comments or observations? The next request is from Mary Beth Cochran.
Good evening. I'm Mary Beth Cochran, and I'm a real estate agent at University Realty in Loma Linda, and I live in Loma Linda. And Cheryl Smith and I are here tonight to talk to you about some property issues that we see in Loma Linda. And that has to do with houses that appear to be abandoned, houses that appear to have a lot of trash, unkempt landscaping, deteriorating structures. And this is unhealthy. It is an attraction for people that we don't want in the community, who might have desire to inhabit an abandoned home, and health issues because of rats and things like that. And I'd like to know what the city is allowed to do when these types of properties are brought to the attention of the building department and other administrators. Because it not only is a distraction and a health problem, it also reduces the values of the homes that surround them. And that's a problem when we as realtors show properties and see a beautiful house sitting on the market for a long time because of this type of neighbor. And I don't know if anyone can respond to me while I'm standing here, or if you would like to wait until Cheryl's done, and then we can respond to both of us.
Well, there are rules about discussing items that are not agendized. So there's a limited amount of discussion that we can do, and we can give direction to the city staff or ask them to do a study, for example, but we can't do much debating about it. We tend to push that a bit because if it's an interesting topic, we like to take it up. Like, all the interesting things that Marjorie brought forward, I'd love to talk about those for quite a while, but technically, we're not supposed to.
And so whom should I speak to with the city?
If I can ask you just a quick...
Sure.
Have you reported any of these properties to the city?
Yes, from time to time.
Okay, maybe the city manager can at least address how that kind of issue is ordinarily handled. Okay. Yeah, what's the process?
Thank you. Yes, we're talking about the same topic.
As the mayor said, California law prevents us legally from discussing things that are not on the agenda. So we have to be really careful with that. However, these are all items that would be handled directly by city staff. And typically, and I'd like maybe the city manager or assistant city manager to explain the process of how one would normally go about reporting that, just in case anyone's wondering. And then ultimately, if you feel that there is an issue where it's not being handled at that level, then it would be brought to this level, and we would agendize it, and we could openly discuss it at that point.
Okay, and you would want the specific address.
Well, they will want that information, yes.
Yeah, okay.
We, there's not much we can do with it right now, so.
Thanks.
But maybe they can explain what that normal process is.
Okay.
Sure, just typically, you know, we'll get a report about the condition at a property. One of the code enforcement officer or planner, building inspector will go over schedule and inspection. These are private properties. We can't go kick down the door and barge our way in. So there's a timeframe built into scheduling. And, you know, at some point, it is at the convenience of the property owners and their willingness to let us in. If there's a founded complaint, then a notice to abate or a notice to remove is given. Typically, they're given somewhere between two and four weeks, depending on the issue. Clean it up. If they fail to do that, then they're cited. Typically, that's another two to four weeks. If they really don't deal with that, then they're cited again. We get another two to four weeks. There's a third citation, then it's, then we take it to a nuisance hearing before planning commission, so we're three to four months into it. Planning commission can take two to three months to resolve the nuisance. And then ultimately, it ends up in front of City Council, and we've done one of those things for, I believe we went four or five months before we finally brought this to resolution. So these are, all those, these are issues, and we kind of reply, rely on the homeowners and the people that care about their neighborhood. We work with them, but the enforcement process can be a real long, drawn-out process because there's the rights of the property owner that we have to respect in this.
At some point in time, will the city do the abatement if it's necessary?
At the very end of the process, we are given direction by the council to abate.
Okay.
And that, at the very least, is four to five months and not inconceivably a year to become a forced abatement.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Can you give us example of what is it that the city could, could not do? I mean, can we actually remove property? Or are we just asking them to clean up? Is it because they're not painting their house, or is it because the weeds are getting too big? I mean, the range varies. So maybe get some clarity as to what is the city can do and not do?
It is, certain things are very clear-cut when they're an issue as far as life safety, an attractive nuisance, a building that's, you know, essentially going to fall down or injure somebody. Those are pretty easy to clarify. And then we get into issues that are more subjective, you know, how tall is tall on grass? At what point is paint considered faded? You're, what is beautiful to you is ugly to me, and those subjective issues become very difficult for us to enforce.
I think I'm considering things that are a little bit more disrepair than that. Thank you.
There's a, there's kind of a common one that we see every year, which is weed abatement. And when, when people don't keep their brush in check, and the fire marshal goes around and determines... What we've seen, we've seen this a lot. We get a report on it every year. A lot of people are ordered to clean that up, and if they don't do it, we go through, we hire a company to go do it, and then we send them the bill. And if they don't pay the bill, it gets attached to their taxes. But that's a pretty clear public safety type of issue that he's talking about, where a fire danger could affect everybody. But I think what he's getting at is the beauty perception gets a little more difficult to...
I think you guys are talking about something a little bit beyond that. Do you want to go into more details to what your concerns are? Go ahead.
Come on up, Cheryl. Cheryl Smith, 25547 Lawton Avenue. It's a nice street.
No, my block is not a nice street.
But it's a long block. It's a long street.
No, it's not. My block is a short block, and it's horrible.
But it's a long street.
That's supposed to make me feel better? Not really.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
I would like to report two houses on my block that have unacceptable front yards. It has caused difficulty in selling houses because no one wants to live on this block, and for good reason. I keep my front yard nice and presentable. My lawn is mowed and trimmed weekly. My bushes are trimmed. I do not have trash and broken-down vehicles on bricks in my driveway that are totaled. My house is not rotting on the outside, which two doors down. I have complained about two houses in my neighborhood on more than one occasion to City Hall. Nothing has ever been done. Once again, I came to City Hall and reported the houses on my block over two weeks ago. I talked to Gil Garza at City Hall and then reached Ovadu Papesku, and neither called me back or left a message as promised. This is unacceptable and disrespectful to me as a citizen. I am paying your salaries. How can you help me tonight? Several houses in Loma Linda are an embarrassment to our city. I don't think one of you would want to live on my particular block, not a one of you, because it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. And I have lived here since 1972. I moved to my house in 1978 when I was two years old. It was already run down, and I fixed it up. 25559 Lawton Avenue, next door to my house on the east side. The front yard has a car in bricks that is totaled from an accident in a broken-down camper. Also, this area is a lot of trash. So just to sum it up, Lily spent over a year digging one part of the lawn out, putting rocks in with a big mound of dirt that is, if it rains, it's going to block up your storm drains. I complained on more than one occasion. Nobody did anything about it. That's not acceptable. One of my former students is a code enforcer in Riverside. He called. Somebody hung up on him. He said, "This is unacceptable to have a mound of dirt because you're going to be fixing rocks, and now they're parking cars on it." So it's a used car lot. There's so much trash in the backyard, we had a rat infestation. I spent $2,000 getting rid of my rats. And the rat company said, "This is not your fault. Your house is immaculate. It's your next-door neighbor's trash." And they were burning trash papers in the backyard, coming into my yard that could have set the fence on fire. When I asked the neighbor, "Oh, we were cooking food," I said, "Well, I don't know what you were, I don't care what you were really doing. You were burning papers." Computer papers, trash, all over the place. I said, "You don't burn trash in your backyard anymore. That happened to me when I grew up in the 50s." Two houses down on 25523 Lawton Avenue, two houses to the west of my house, the whole house is rotting. It's completely rotting. And Gil, "Oh, I go buy houses there every day." "Well, if you do, I don't understand it. It's rotting. You go up..." I tried to talk to the neighbor. It reeks so bad. The odor is so putrid. It is absolutely filthy, and there's washers and dryers packed in the backyard. And Mary Beth Cochran looks down on that house from her house. Not a pretty sight when you look down on washers and dryers and trash. I'm a responsible citizen, and I'm sick of it. I'm just sick of it. I'm so sick of it, I can't tell you how sick I am. And I'm trying to be as nice as can be, but I'm not going to vote for some of you again that never called me back. And I will come every City Council until something happens to this. Thank you.
Do you want your copy of this?
These properties are due south of this location here at City Hall.
It's an embarrassment. Not one of you lived on my street, not a one of you.
Thank you.
And I hope I hear back.
We hope you do, too.
Because I'll be back. You can count on me.
I know.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay. Here's your task list. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Okay, no takers, then we'll go back to item number... Oh, we've got someone. Would you like to come up? Yes, we'll talk about item number one, and you can, if you like, you can make a comment. It's not a formal public...
Excuse me, I have to be on the agenda tonight twice, so I'm baffled why I wasn't. Thank you.
Okay.
In compared to Loma Linda and Monterey Park. You know, Monterey Park, they're using 18 unit. They pay for the water 39.23, the sewer 16.32, plus the water treatment 40.71. So it's 39 for the water, 31 for the water and sewer. But here in Loma Linda, we pay, and they use 18 unit. Loma Linda, we use 15 unit. The water is 47.42. The sewer, it means including the water treatment, is 58.94, almost 59 dollars. It's already increased a lot. And then the Monterey Park, every year, you have, you can change the toilet free. They designated the day you pick it up and return, the certain day to return, to change this smaller toilet. But we do nothing. They do it for five years already, but we do nothing, and try to increase the sewer too much. Your water is more than the sewer, the sewer is more than the water. I hope you can consider this point.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Address, okay. Okay, I'll give you a copy. I think no reason to increase anymore in compared with other cities. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments. We had an extended discussion at the last City Council meeting about the water, about the sewer rates. And we went through the individual complaints from the citizens or the, I guess, the no votes. Whenever we sent out the mailing to 7,000 addresses, we got about somewhere short of 50 responses or objections to the increase. And we didn't consider the small response to be indicative of a lack of disgust with increased sewer rates. We took it very seriously. The issue in this case is that the sewer is being handled by, we handle the pipes going to San Bernardino, but San Bernardino houses the actual sewer treatment plant just west of the San Bernardino Municipal Golf Course and coincidentally, immediately west of the shooting site from last week. And that, that organization, we're part of a joint powers authority to run it. There are three organizations, there are three or four different organizations involved. And it basically runs at cost. It has no profits. None of the money is diverted to the city of San Bernardino for their bankruptcy. And we are required by the state of California to keep the costs contained within that business unit. And when the rates go up, we pass them through. We don't, we don't charge a franchise fee on top of it or anything like that. Whatever they charge us, we have to pay. And all we're doing is passing that by looking at the second reading and having a roll call vote on item number one. We're considering whether or not to pass those rates through to you. And we understand that the water rates are rising, and that's because our water fund has been in deficit. And that increase was passed, and the other components of the sewer fund increases were passed in prior years. So all of those rates are going up collectively, and this is just the component that goes to the San Bernardino Sewer Treatment Plant that we're talking about tonight. So going forward to the, to the action tonight, is there anybody else who would like to speak? It's not a formal public hearing because it wasn't noticed as such, but anybody who would like to speak will take your comments. Okay, seeing none, then what's the pleasure of the council on item one?
I just want to further kind of elaborate on what the mayor said. Several, several years ago, many years ago, three cities, the city of San Bernardino, city of Highland, and the city of Loma Linda entered a joint powers agreement that the sewer treatment plant would be housed in San Bernardino and run in there, and all of our sewer is all pumped there. If, we have no other option, if we said, well, and we need to clarify. The, what's official title? San Bernardino Water Municipal Water District, whatever. It's not part of the city of San Bernardino, other than city of San Bernardino is a partner in running the operation like we are and like Highland is. There's three, three cities involved. But because they have the name San Bernardino, people think that that's the city of San Bernardino, and that when they raise rates, it must be because of the city of San Bernardino bankruptcy. It has nothing to do with that. However, and we discussed this at our last council meeting, if, if, if we wanted to pull out of that, what would be our option? And our option would be, we would have to build a sewer treatment plant and facility. And I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars that we don't have, and that's just not a financial reality.
And lots of odors.
Correct. We would have to put that somewhere on our property or our land. So do we want to build a sewer treatment plant here in Loma Linda to handle that? Or do we want to continue pumping it over to the city of San Bernardino? Or do we want to continue pumping it over to the city of San Bernardino to be taken care of over there? So there are a lot of factors. Now, the, the council, last, last meeting, we stressed that we wanted to know exactly what the financial position was of the San Bernardino Municipal Water District and whether or not this was, you know, a needed change and, and increase and all that based on what that all that is. What was reported to us is that basically this is to upkeep equipment and the facilities and, and, you know, over 20, 30 years, the facility gets old, the equipment gets old, and this is just to keep that stuff running. And again, this is, I keep calling it a partnership, partnership's usually, you know, two, but it's really three, us, Highland and San Bernardino in this thing. And all three cities are getting the same rate increase to cover these costs to, to keep the facility running. So unfortunately, absent somebody coming up with a great idea of how we could move our sewer somewhere else, which doesn't seem like it's possible, we're, we're kind of stuck and forced into this. But we don't want people to think we don't have a say. Our city manager sits as a representative on that board, you know, he has assured us and shown us the financials. We have the, I'm sorry, the director of San Bernardino Municipal Water, and if I'm butchering the name, I apologize, is here to potentially answer any questions that people might have. But yeah, city of San Bernardino Municipal Water Department. But again, this is not a bailout for San Bernardino. It's not anything nefarious or anything like that. Unfortunately, it's the cost of everything that keeps going up and up. We do take this very seriously and, and we're just not sure of another option at this point. So I'll cover it as simplistic as I can make it.
I think in all fairness, since you've joined us this evening, it would be only fair for you to talk a little bit about why the rates are going up and how the money's going to be used.
I'd be happy to. I'm John Klaus, the Director of Water Reclamation for the city of San Bernardino Municipal Water Department. I've been with the department for eight years and I've worked at several other agencies. I manage the city of Riverside. We saw our treatment facility and collection system for, for just under 10 years, as with the Cupid Valley Water District and also with Corolla Engineers. As, as was, as was stated, we just cover costs. We, we don't make a profit. The facility that you are partners in has been in operation since the late 60s, actually 50s, so it's over 60 years old. A component, a major component is Unit One, that's our primary treatment and secondary treatment. And that's about 50% of the entire treatment plant's capacity of 33 million gallons per day. And that's been in operation since 1958. And so we're just completing just under a $9 million rehabilitation. And we've done a lot of work to keep our costs down. In fact, we've, we've decreased our operational costs, but the reserves that we've had for capital projects, for improvements and rehabilitation, we've been drawing from those reserves. In fact, that's how we paid for this, this rehabilitation project. So that's why we hired a consultant. We do that periodically to do the rate study, look at our revenues, they project that over a period of time, and look at what rates we need to cover those, those costs. And that's what you see before you, the increase that, that's being proposed. The last rate study that was performed was in February 2011. And so the last rate adjustment was actually in the beginning of 2012. And for this rate adjustment, we're looking for, for the city of Loma Linda is 3.7% for the first year or 68 cents. That's per residential unit. The next year is 8.7% or $1.67. And the final year of adjustment would be 3.4% or 70 cents.
And that's per house?
That's per residential unit, yes.
I just have a couple of clarification questions. The sewer plant treats for city of San Bernardino, Loma Linda and Highland?
Correct.
And does it have capacity for more residents to move in or where, where is it at as far as capacity?
The plant's capacity, design capacity is 33 million gallons per day. We're currently treating 22 million gallons per day.
You've got plenty of capacity.
And that's the secondary plant. We also operate the rapid infiltration extraction facility that's located in the city of Colton. And that, that's, that's where we get the final stage, tertiary or, or third stage of treatment that's required by state regulations before we discharge into the San River. That's a 40 million gallon per day treatment plant and we're treating about 27 million gallons per day.
And correct. Perhaps you may be able to educate me, do city of San Bernardino residents and city of Highland pay the same rates or how they, how do they decide what their rates are?
The rates are based on the cost. And so they're, they're equivalent rates. What you see, if you, if you see the rate study, ours is a little bit higher because that includes our customer service element, which the city of Loma Linda handles. And so that's not included in, in the rate, this rate adjustment, but it is in the city of San Bernardino's.
So those cities have had to increase their rates as well to help allocate money for these capital improvement projects?
Correct. It is spread evenly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Looks like no further questions.
Right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, John.
Okay, I guess we're up against figuring out how to word the motion.
Well, given the report and discussion that we had both in our last meeting as well as this meeting, I would move that we adopt Council Bill 0-2015-03.
Read by title only?
What's that?
Read by title only, waive the complete reading of the bill.
Establishing wastewater collection rates and repealing ordinance number 716.
Yeah, she'll, and then we'll do it, roll call. So there's a motion and is there a second?
Yeah.
One, one final, one final comment for the public. Last meeting, we discussed what the options were if we decided we were not going to adopt this. And we just flat out refused. And the reality is, is if, if we don't do this, the city will have to take that up and continue to pay that. So either way, it's going to come out of our tax dollars. So either we, we pay it individually or ultimately the city pays for it, which is all of our money. The problem with that is that we had some testimony here tonight. We've talked about some of the increasing crime and other things that we're trying to address, where we're talking about possibly increasing some of our public safety and things like that. If we were to, if we were to go to op, option B, so to speak, that's less money out of the city coffers directly and we wouldn't be able to do some of those other things. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place on this one. None of us want it. None of us want to vote on this. None of us want to accept it, but we're, it's, it's just one of those realities where we don't have much say in it.
It is entitled in ordinance of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, California, establishing wastewater collection rates effective January 1, 2016, and repealing ordinance number 716. You may vote.
I just want to make a quick comment on the, I know we kind of skipped a little bit and we went to item number one, but back to the general item regarding the, the houses. I just want to make sure people understand that you cannot put an item on the agenda because you want to complain about a neighbor. If that happens, our, our city hall is going to be filled with people complaining about neighbors. You could put an item on the agenda only as it relates to an ordinance or something we're about to pass, so then we can discuss it. Having said that, we always welcome comments in which it's brought to our attention in a public way about whether staff is doing something and not doing, and that's something that we address with staff. I also want to clarify one other item. Ms. Smith said I'd not returned her phone call. I had three different conversations with her, so it's absolutely false that I'd not returned her phone call. She was very upset that I did not call her back within an hour and I waited 24 hours in order to make sure I got enough evidence about what was happening. I want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Of all people here, I'm probably more proactive in interacting with residents than anyone else. I probably get more phone calls than anyone else and I try my best to address everyone's issue. Obviously, it's been brought up in a public matter. There's a, there's a process. Just for clarification issues, if you even put an item on the agenda in order to fit to be fair, everyone who, who's affected by it has to be notified. So if you're going to complain about a neighbor, that means we have to by law make sure he's here and he can explain himself. Well, clearly, we can never do that, otherwise we would have mayhem here. So there's a process and, and procedures. So I know that she wants to come in and complain about it every day, that's fine, but that in no way takes away our ability to make sure we address items in a thoughtful, in legal manner, because there are things that we can and cannot do. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Thank you.
Okay, now our auditors get their moment in the sun. Item number two, joint meeting of the city council, and I'm opening the housing authority so it can meet with us regarding presentation of the audit.
Mayor, council members, we have our auditors here. We'll have a presentation from our partner, Terry Shea, with Rogers, Anderson, Melody and Scott, and then followed by a presentation by myself. And just want to let the public know that we met earlier with the audit committee and discussed the financial statements with the audit committee. And we'll be presenting a summarized version of the discussion that was held with the audit committee.
Which button do I press?
Yes.
You'll see arrow?
Arrows.
Which one? Me and my kids here.
Right here.
I pressed it, it didn't work. Ah.
Good evening, your honorable mayor, members of city council, city staff. Thank you for allowing us to.
Thanks.
All right. To work for the city. I want to take the time to thank Diana and Sonia and the rest of the staff and the courtesies that they extended us during our audit. One of my auditors here is Ann and, and she says the staff here is, is great and that they go out of their way to help, so very good. First thing is responsibilities. The city's responsibilities is to present the financial position and the result of its operations fairly, in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, adopt sound accounting principles, provide reasonable estimates, establish and maintain internal controls and prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibility is to obtain reasonable, not absolute, but reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free and material with statements. We test items on a, on a sample basis, we send out confirmations, we assess the accounting principles used, the estimates made, and we evaluate your overall financial statement presentation. We look at the city's internal control policies and procedures and we test those control policies, procedures to make sure you're following them. And then we also express an opinion on your financial statements. Our opinion states that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Significant accounting policies have been applied consistently year to year. The estimates are reasonable, the disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. And then key points this year was the implementation of GASB 68, which you'd heard about last year and then this year it came to fruition. What that means is you had to put your unfunded PERS liability on your financial statements this year. We had no disagreements with management. We found no material errors or irregularities. We discussed very, you know, significant items during the audit. And in the single audit, there was some internal control compliance and some findings on the, on the one grant that you had. Any questions on any of the opinion?
I'm going to make the same comment that I believe I made last year, probably previous year. This is, I mean, it's a very comprehensive report.
Yes.
And I've reviewed reports from the past and I don't read it cover to cover, but you've got highlights in here too that I do spend time with. I don't have any questions because I've, I've never had, I don't have the opportunity to read the report before I hear the verbal report. So it's difficult to have a dialogue.
Sure.
Speaking as only one council member, it'd be nice to have a couple of weeks head start on this. I may have questions, I may not, but I don't know if I do because I haven't seen the report.
That's something we could definitely work on next year, so.
And that is a, a timing issue of getting everything done and, and then reviewing everything. And this year, I think the, the thing that held us back a little bit was the implementation of GASB 68 with waiting for information from PERS to be able to record these entries.
Okay. That was, PERS was over a month late when they promised it and so it kind of pushed everybody back, so.
Okay. And, and I don't mean that as a criticism, but as a practical challenge for.
No, I agree 100%.
For somebody who wants to at least take my job seriously and, and find what might be useful information for me.
What, what we can do with Diana's permission is, is next year, if we don't have the finals, we could get you a draft a couple of weeks.
That would be.
And they don't change a whole lot between the draft and the final, but that'd be something we can work with, with Diana.
That would be terrific.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so my presentation covers mainly the financial statements, just the whole we present. We present to you the CAFER, which is the whole book, and it includes the financial statements, the notes, and it has a statistical section in it as well. In it will be the, the opinion from the auditor, which we have received an unmodified opinion, which is basically a clean opinion. We do present in the basic financial statements, we do present two basic, basically, they're presentations of our financial statements. One is this governmental wide financial statements, which is a full accrual economic activities for the, the city, basically. And this is where you'll see the presentation where we had to accrue the unfunded liability for GASB 68 for the pension, which came through. And then we present the fund financials, which is more the standard form of governmental, which is our current resources. And you don't really see the long-term liabilities such as long-term debt and you won't see the long-term pension liability also on, on the face of the financials in that presentation. So. So we also do a statistical section, which gives basically a 10-year history of some of these financial trends, revenues, debt and demographic information about the city and then the operating information as well. And then as a city a whole, we have the city, which includes the general fund, special revenue funds, and we have the enterprise fund, which is our water sewer and our Loma Linda Connected Community, which operate more like business and collect user fees for the services. We have our Loma Linda Housing Authority, which is a special revenue fund. And then we do book the successor agency because we, we elected to become the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. So that gets presented here. This is the major change to our financial system, financial presentation, basically, for the unfunded liability of our pension. This does not include the unfunded liability for the medical retirement. That will be in a couple of years, we'll have to also present that on the face of the financial statement. And that's an additional, at the present time, it's probably an additional half million of unfunded liability for the, what's called the OPEB. But currently, we have for the, we restated the beginning fund balance in the net position for the governmental activities was, which includes the general fund. It was 9.5 million that we restated. And for the business type activ, for the business type activities, if you could go back one more time. So this is the, the 9.5 million for the governmental activity and then the 3.1 million for the business type activity. So, and then I brought this forward just to kind of tell you our change in beginning fund balance. So this is, was our new beginning fund, I mean, net position, sorry, using the incorrect term. And then this was our current operating, our current operations. So we added for the governmental activities, we added 1.1 million in net position. And for our business type activity, we actually ended with a negative 1.7 million. For across the city, it was 614,000 negative. So this kind of just summarizes our net position. We have for governmental and business type activities, we have net investment in capital assets. So this is all our infrastructure and our physical assets that we have and cash. And so this is kind of like. so this is kind of like what we would call, most of us think of as our fund balance or available assets. We have restricted assets in the tune of, for governmental, 27 million, and then in business-type activity, we have this 40 million for some debt service restrictions that we have. And then we have unrestricted, which ended up being negative due to the booking of the unfunded liability for the pension. So this shows our statement of activity under the government-wide financial presentation. So you'll see, we, the way the presentation is, you have your program expenditures, and then you measure that against your program revenues to come up with your cost of services. So this is cost of services, and then you would take your general revenues here and add them in to come up with your total net position. So basically, our governmental activity, we had a negative 11.4 million, and then our business-type activity, we had a negative 0.4, 2.4 million in net position. Sorry. This is our fund financial presentation, and this is more of the governmental activity that we see, of just our current financial resources, and this is where we don't see necessarily those long-term liabilities hitting the books. And a few years back, we, Gatsby, presented the new fund financial, the fund types that we would report under. So you have your non-spendable, your restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. These are legally restricted items. These are committed, which we have elected by a resolution to commit for our emergency contingent fund. And then we have assigned, which are, we also have for our equipment capital replacement in there. And this is our unassigned fund balance, which is the 6.8 million in the general government, general fund. So we have a total of, a percentage of 82% that we cover for our annual expenditures of fund balance.
Are these, those all sound like synonyms to me, but, and I appreciate you defining them. Are they defined in the book as well, so?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and this is just, shows our operations. So this is the statement of revenues, expenditure, and change in fund balance for the year. We had revenues in our general fund of 15.4 million, expenditures of 14.6. We had other financing resources of close to 400,000, and then we had a positive result in our general fund operations of 1.1 million. So we increased our fund balance to 11.9 million. And this, we just show the net position for the proprietary funds, which are our water, enterprise, our capital, our sewer capital, and then our Loma Linda Connected Community. And this just shows the net position. We actually have negative net positions with, for the, all these operations. In the water, and particularly the Loma Linda Connected Community, these negative results are of long-term, well, the water enterprise, the negative result is primarily due to depreciation on capital assets, which is an expenditure. And then for the Loma Linda Connected Communities, also, it's a depreciation in addition to debts, debt accrual on long-term loans that we have, that we don't have sufficient cash to pay down. And then this is our successor agency, and this is just, we, we now present it as a private purpose trust fund, as the successor agency to the former redevelopment, and we just present the assets, some deferred outflow resources, and then the liabilities, which for the most part currently is the long-term debt bond issues on, for the former redevelopment agency. And there's a whole process in which we receive funding in order to pay that down from, through the ROPS program with the oversight boards and the California Department of Finance. And this just shows the statement of change in house. So it shows what we received. So we received for the year 4.4 million, we deducted the 2.4 million, and then we added in the net position of 2 million. And part of this is just a timing issue, the way it gets recorded, because on July 1st of the next year, we actually make a debt service payment. So our cash does change in that position. And basically, that's just a summarized version of our financial statements. We do advise that when you read the financial statements, do read the notes to the financial statements. It does give very detailed information about the numbers and what makes up the numbers. So we recommend, we like to thank our auditors. They have been very good to work with. We've developed a good relationship with them, and they assist us with the presentation and getting out the book in a timely manner. We're trying to get it down in a timely manner, so. And I'd like to thank Sonia Fabella, my accounting manager, who spends long hours here getting everything cranked out and working with the auditors when they're here on site.
So if you gave the city a grade on our financial health right now, A, B, C, D, F, what would it be?
I say we're an A. I mean, we're not perfect, we're not, we have some issues to address as far as our unfunded liabilities, and these are long-term out there. And we will speak, you know, with the city manager and probably come up with a plan and maybe to have discussions with council as far as what direction to take, as far as, you know, maybe starting to set up some reserves to address these unfunded liabilities. But as far as on an annual operation, I see that we are positive, we are covering our operating costs, and I think we have on the horizon some development that will assist with our revenues and contribute to our better health, for the, financial health for the city.
So we have some challenges, but we have the capacity to address them successfully. What do you anticipate the impact of a big organization like this VA clinic that's moving into town is going to have on city finances? And they're a federal organization, and I'm a little unclear as to just what potential impact they'll have.
No, sir, what's happening is, this clinic is going to open this summer. Is that because they have a long-term lease with the private developers? So they don't own the land, so therefore the property owners still have to pay the property tax and business license, and so that's a good thing for us compared to the other hospital. So it's good.
And that part I understood, in terms of drain on our resources? Water, sewage?
Yes, but they...
They'll pay their share of the utilities. Utilities will be no net change, it'll be, they'll pay their share, right?
Right. So as far as police and fire is, I don't want to say for the fire, it's another building that we have to protect. And same thing with the police, it's another building we have to protect. But what's so nice about it is because it's so close to the freeway off-ramp and on-ramp, so if we have less impact on the traffic that usually come down Mountain View.
The only thing, and I brought this up when we debated the project years ago, is the unfortunate rise in transient population that comes to VA facilities and things like that. I think we are going to see additional taxing resources on our public safety. And we knew that, we discussed it, it is time for us to start talking about that and make sure that we're built up and prepared for that. I think that's inevitable, so.
Now, a large facility like that comes with their own security detail as well, right? So they'll take care of their own property and issues.
No, because it's not, well, it will not have VA police because it's not, it's not a federal building or federal property. Because it's private developer and private owned, it won't have, it won't be under the jurisdiction of the VA Police Department or anything like that. Am I correct or wrong?
VA police does not have authority in the state of California, so if any crime is committed, they just stand by and call us.
Well, either way, so over here, they're, this is going to sound about an empty suit that drives around and calls us anyway. Over there, the empty suit won't even be driving around.
There's a deputy now that's been at the VA for 110 minutes on a call.
And that's part of some of the other stuff we talked about last, council, where we look at that fair share assessment on how these facilities do affect the city and the residents here, and we're at that point, we're getting there. So far, they've been very cooperative and working through that with Chief Bender and Captain Dorsey, so.
Are there any questions?
Is there any action we need to take, or is this just a...
Just to receive the report?
Okay.
Good job, you always give a nice, concise, clear report. I appreciate it.
I echo that. Thank you to everybody involved.
If you like numbers, you can look through it, there's a lot of numbers, and I went through it, so.
I'll try to impress my wife at night and pull this out.
You'll have to take caffeine for your CAFER. And thanks to our auditors. Okay, so then we're ready for item number three. Another public hearing, Council Bill O-2015-04. First reading, setting second reading for January 12, amending the code.
All right.
Regarding demon weed.
Since Diana was clear and concise, I'll go the opposite way. This is a development code, which is essentially the city ordinances that define and prohibit marijuana dispensaries, cultivation of marijuana, and commercial marijuana use in the city of Loma Linda. Proposition 215 was enacted to enable people who are in need of medical marijuana to possess that without criminal prosecution. However, Prop 215 does not allow unlimited quantities of marijuana to be grown anywhere. AB 2650 and AB 1300 recognize the authority of counties and cities to adopt local ordinances that require or regulate the location, operation, establishment of medical marijuana co-ops, and to criminally and civilly enforce the ordinances. If you guys recall, on June 28th in 2011, council unanimously adopted Ordinance 706, which prohibited medical marijuana distribution facilities in any zone in the city. This ordinance essentially clarifies and extrapolates beyond that, that any cultivation, commercial operation, sale, or distribution of marijuana in any zone in the city is prohibited. Essentially, this is a zoning ordinance, so just like certain activities are allowed in certain zones, you can have stores in commercial zones and houses in residential zones, this ordinance would say you can have no marijuana in every zone. So it essentially outlaws marijuana everywhere. Did I have a typo? You're giggling.
I was just, I was just amused that the conclusion of your report says that this was to ensure the quality of life remains high. I just thought that was ironic.
I cracked myself up, all right.
I had a couple of questions, I don't know if you'll be able to answer them, but maybe our police chief might. I'm just curious, are we having, have we had issues with people trying to grow marijuana in the city of Loma Linda?
Trying to grow, yes. Opening a cannabis sales business, yes.
Okay.
This allows local control.
Correct. And it looks like strengthening existing laws we already have on the...
Yes, this was supported by the California League of Cities based on the fact that it does shift this down to local control and it puts it, so, and I know, I received an email, and there's, believe it or not, there are residents here in Loma Linda that are opposed to this ordinance, because they would like to see as being a health community, we should open up a health co-op and sell legalized medicine, so to speak. However, there are plenty of communities out there that are actually choosing to endorse this, one of them being the city of Adelanto, which has opened the gates and said, welcome, welcome, come to our city. Unfortunately, my personal belief is that will bring a lot of other issues along with it. So again, the importance of this is the local control, and I believe the overwhelming majority of our community supports what we're doing here tonight.
I'm also curious to know, have we seen an increase in possession of marijuana or being under the influence of marijuana within the city? Or is that too vague of a question?
I would have to go with a yes on that.
Okay, so, I mean, clearly, the state allowing some of these marijuana dispensaries, it's making it easier for people to have access to it, so it's becoming an issue.
What I think we're starting to see, and the captain can kind of clarify this, too, is, are the, the other things that nobody's really thought of, such as DUI under the influence of marijuana as opposed to alcohol, we're seeing a huge rise in that. The problem is, is that right now, because we're still new to this game, there's no way to really quantify what is DUI when you're smoking marijuana? What makes you under the influence? Is it one joint, or is it a half a pound? But unfortunately, we've seen fatalities, we've seen an increase in collisions and things like that, where people report using, openly report it, because, you know, it's not legal anymore. Yeah, officer, I was just smoking a weed, and I, smoking a blunt, and I hit that car, oops. Those are the things we're going to start seeing more and more, and unfortunately, the state hasn't addressed those issues of how do we, how do we control that public behavior of people, let alone what they do in private life.
I mean, I fully support this, only because I've been taught from early age, and I'm seeing it now even as an adult with some of the younger population. Marijuana is truly a gateway drug to other drugs. It's, that hasn't changed in 50 years, and it starts off being just experimental and dealing with headaches, but it opens people up to so many other issues, and it's been evident over and over and over again. And sadly enough, having a teenage child, finding out that some of their friends are being exposed to it, and it's happening. It's amazing how history repeats itself, how kids start off young, and unfortunately, right now, you know, in our, on TV and movies, it's being, you know, displayed as it's okay, everybody does it, but the reality is that most of those people who do it end up having problems in life and have a hard time adjusting, because it just opens them up to so many other problems. It's sad.
Sir, you're correct with that, it's becoming acceptable practice? And all drug usage is being decriminalized? Which is causing a huge problem in California? But what comes along with the cannabis is now that since people can get it through the collectives, they're now taking it and doing a procedure that utilizes chemicals to get the THC out of it to make it a much stronger product, which is causing fires and killing people. So you have something that people are pushing as, it doesn't hurt you, but as American people always do, they take it one step further to make it a little better, which makes it a little more dangerous.
Okay, this item is scheduled for a public hearing. I will open the public hearing with my trustee mallet. Come forward with your comments, if you have any. He's not the public, but...
Talk about the cost of that versus IV Tylenol, see which one is a little more expensive.
Maybe we all die with a good, high Tylenol level. Nirvana. Okay, the closed public hearing, there doesn't seem to be any interest, and we didn't get a visit from our trustee little nurse from Riverside. get a visit from our trusty little nurse from Riverside, who usually comments. What was his name? Lenny something? Anyway. Okay, close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. As you may be aware, the reason we need to take somewhat urgent action on this is that the way the state law was adopted as of October, if we do not prohibit cultivation in the city by an effective ordinance as of March first of next year, we will lose the right to regulate that within the city to the state. Similarly, if we don't prohibit distribution within the city or deliveries, then the state could license that within our city. And so this is a reaction to the new state law, even though we've prohibited dispensaries since two thousand and eleven, we need to address these new issues that the legislature and the governor have created for us. And that's why we do need to take action in a fairly prompt fashion. We'll have second reading if, if the recommendation is followed at the first meeting in January and that would allow us 30 days after that for the ordinance to be effective prior to March first.
Okay, if there's no more commentary, then we need to have a motion to accept this as the first reading and to set a second reading for January 12.
I'll make that motion to, to accept this as a first reading and set a second motion for January 12.
And it would be important to have a quorum on January 12th so we can take final action.
Okay. There's a motion and a second requires a vote. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of setting the second reading, say aye. Aye. And opposed, hearing none, that's approved unanimously. We'll move to the consent calendar.
We got one more.
Oh, well, I can do it in any order I like, but we'll do number four.
All right, well, we got rid of the pot, now we're going to get rid of the massage establishments. So this is.
Out of the pot and into the fire.
This is Development Code Amendment fifteen one fifty-nine, has definitions and regulations relating to massage establishments and massage technicians. In two thousand and eight, the state enacted legislation that created the California Massage Therapy Council and essentially created a licensing and professional organization to license massage therapists that do that type of activity outside of a medical or clinical practice. Some of the, the recent state laws have changed relating to what the, the city can and cannot enforce and regulate. This is a zoning ordinance, the same as the marijuana ordinance, that requires specific actions by massage operators, essentially that any, anybody that is outside of a medical practice conducting massage is, must have a state massage therapist license. All practitioners and therapists go through a state background check. I believe it's about 1,500 hours of training, so there's a, a professional umbrella over them. This isn't fly-by-night massage outfits then, or practitioners. And there's also some requirements in the zoning as far as floor plans, cleanliness of the facility, the, the way the rooms are constructed so that it's not too private, however, it's not too, too open, essentially trying to limit storefront activities. The licensing and inspection portion will be kind of divided up, the business license via the city, the health component via county health, the background checks via the sheriff's department following the same model that San Bernardino County follows. Then it also creates an ability for the city staff to do unauthorized inspections. JARP said we're not allowed to do any sting operations though. So essentially, the current ordinance allows massage therapy in the commercial manufacturing zone only. The only things we have in the commercial manufacturing zones are mini storage units. So it kind of precludes that and to have, have a legitimate use for that outside of massages and mini storage units, the, the zoning ordinance will allow it in the neighborhood business and general business zones, which is essentially where business should be conducted, like I said, by the licensed therapists and owners and operators that have been thoroughly screened by the sheriff's department and county health. Thank you, all right.
I know Redlands has a number of these and I believe there are some in Loma Linda, but the, kind of the traditional Chinese foot massage. I know a lot of people in Loma Linda that use, I don't know where they go, but they, they talk about it. Are we putting them out of business or, in other words, I don't have a sense of what the current regulations are versus what this is going to require? And are we going to be putting some existing businesses out of business by approving this?
I believe that, I gotta go back and look, this does allow kind of the massages associated with, you know, the barber shop and beauty parlor above the, above the shoulders and head and neck massage. And I, I would have to go back and look at the, the foot massage portion, but essentially this regulates the, the typical, you know, full, full body massage activity.
Are, is this addressing an existing problem or trying to prevent one from showing up?
We, we have current ordinance to prevent problems from showing up, however, the state law has changed and we're adopting our ordinance to match state law so that we can be in, in conformance with the massage therapist licensing and, and on the other side, creating an avenue for legitimate businesses that do this type of work and in the process, close down businesses that shouldn't be doing other type of work under camouflage of this.
And do you know if the, since this is modeled after the state laws, I understand you, does the city of Redlands, our competition, have similar ordinance?
They, they would have something, I would assume they'd have something fairly similar to the, the language is modeled after kind of a mashup of Montclair and the county ordinance, so they were balancing those, Montclair, Claremont, sorry.
Well, yeah, we drew upon a few cities for some guidance. It wasn't Redlands. I'm not aware of what their current ordinances are. Every city in the state is kind of dealing with this right now and what we found is that a couple of drafts that were circulating needed some work and my law partner and I spent quite a bit of time, we, they're adopting concurrently in the city of Montclair, very similar ordinance and we felt it addressed the changes in the state law and the licensing authority that is delegated to the cities as far as operator permits and, and permits for each location, along with the zoning restrictions and the, the other big thing that the cities can regulate is the operational procedures. So there's some fairly extensive regulations that cover that. So we, we believe this is kind of the up-to-date regulations that the cities are allowed to do under state law, recognizing that the primary licensing of the therapists is done by the CAMTC under state law and we will rely upon their licensing process and background checks for the individual therapist.
And I guess my concern is, I don't know if we're raising the standard from here to here or from here to here. And, and hence, I don't know what the outcomes would be if we're going to take some current reputable businesses and put them out of business because now there are more, I don't, those are questions that I have and I haven't read this carefully enough to know whether it answers the quite a few of those questions.
Actually, while the, the city attorney was explaining, I looked it up, there, there are exceptions in here for essentially medical practitioners, physician surgeons, chiropractors, nurses and, and those performing this, as well as barbers and beauticians for head, neck and shoulder massage and a licensed manicurist for foot, ankle and calf and hand massage. So essentially, if you're licensed to do those type of things, to those parts of the body, you can do that outside of the massage ordinance. However, to conduct a massage, it requires somebody that is licensed to perform that.
Well, I don't want to suggest that I'm supportive of businesses of ill repute, but it sounds like a lot of bureaucracy to, to me as well. I go to Naple, we go eat at Napoli's from time to time down here on the corner and I know it used to be there, I'm not sure if it still is, but just inside that strip mall is a place, I think they call it, what's that?
Strip mall?
Anybody have a joint? And I want to be sure that we understand, that I understand before I vote on this, what the implications of this are on existing businesses that we have in our city.
Existing businesses that employ licensed professionals.
Beauticians and.
Well, and, or licensed massage therapists, professionals to do the work can continue to do that. What this does, it takes the onus for us, currently, we have to do background checks and verify the ability, skills and professional ethics of every massage therapist in the city. It takes this away from us and puts it into a state licensing board. It would be the same as if we're saying physicians now have to have a state license rather than, you know, we, we vet each one before he can go to work.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of comments. I did assist code enforcement some years ago with some enforcement proceedings against some illicit businesses here in this city. This was several years ago, but what happened in the state is that there was kind of a hodgepodge of regulation by cities and the state developed this CAMTC regulatory system and took away a lot of authority from the cities. And when that happened, there was a proliferation of these types of establishments throughout the state and some cities had dozens, literally, of establishments that popped up overnight with minimal regulation because the cities were preempted. So there was enough of an outcry that finally the state took action with the new laws that went into effect and gave back to the city's regulatory power as far as zoning and, and some of these other enforcement procedures. The legitimate establishments are fully in support of this new regulatory scheme throughout the state because they were, they were the ones being harmed to a great extent by the proliferation of, of the illicit operations. So the legitimate licensed therapists, well, they're, they're not here to oppose what we're doing obviously, but if, if they were here, they would probably support this because their organization statewide has been supportive of the changes in state law that authorize us to do what we're doing tonight.
The people that are listed here already, of course, they're going to support it. But that doesn't, the implication of that is that if you're not a licensed massage therapist, if you're a Chinese foot massager or Korean or whatever, that's, those are the ones I tend to see, I doubt they're going to. I, I don't even know if they have to be licensed, but, but I'm concerned that we're, I, I understand we're increasing the level of regulations in order to limit the risk that we have to bring these kind of illicit businesses in, but I don't even know how much of a risk that is.
This is a, this is just insurance. I don't think we have the staff or ability to go out and constantly monitor every single massage business here in the city. However, if we did know that there was a problem by having this in place, we could go and address that problem. City Ranch Cucamonga went from having three massage businesses in town to well over 50 or 60 after that last change to state law. Out of that 50 or 60, 45 of them were conducting prostitution, to the point the city actually created a separate team of deputy sheriffs just to address the prostitution going on in these massage parlors. It created a huge loophole and it basically welcomed people to legally set up houses of ill repute, so to speak. So I, I think what we're, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to establish something that, we're not going out there right now looking at any business or targeting anybody. If we did have an issue here, it would allow us, give us some teeth to shut that down and move it along somewhere else.
Our enforcement is.
I'm confident this is not going to be restrictive, it's not going to cause any problems for the legitimate people, whether they be Buddha, Buddhist, Chinese, foot rubbing, whatever, that's not what we're, what we're concerned over.
Our enforcement effort.
One, one point, under the state law, only the state can license the therapists under the CAMTC organization. We cannot do that anymore. Well, they, they enforce the licensing.
Licensing violation.
But we do have the right to license the facilities and the operators of those facilities. That's what the state has delegated to the cities.
So to, to answer your specific question, Councilman Daley? If there are foot massage people that are not licensed massage therapists and are not licensed manicurists and are just somebody out massaging feet for 50 bucks or whatever a foot massage goes for, yes, they will be affected by this.
I appreciate your straight answer and that's, that's the concern I have, is that we're going to put some people out of business here that are trying to run an honest business and that, that's not being addressed. Has anybody gone and talked with them? I'm just concerned about it, that's all.
Our, our enforcement efforts here in the city are a sum total of looking up the Yelp reviews of these establishments.
The what?
Yelp, an online reviewing.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
And the ones that get specific reviews, we turn over to the sheriff's department to enforce. So it's almost a self-regulating world. And that, that is the extent of our enforcement on that. We certainly aren't sending staff in undercover trying to.
Sure. No, I'm glad to hear that. Although, Ovi would volunteer if you needed to volunteer for it.
I, I would like, yeah, under, undercover or not.
Undercover is.
Yeah, I, I would like to encourage Councilman Daley's libertarian impulses. I think that's.
I know.
Impulses.
Impulse.
We're making an impact on him, that's good.
Rather not fitting.
He's pro-business, thank you.
I think it's time for the public hearing. Would the public like to speak on this topic? Massage parlors and the regulation thereof? No takers. Close the public hearing and we're ready for the motion.
Again, my guess is City of San Bernardino will not be enacting something like this, so there'll be plenty of business opportunities for those folks that are impacted here in Loma Linda.
So is there a motion to accept this as the first reading and set the second reading for January 12?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 And opposed? One no, so we have four to one vote. The second reading shall be held on January 12.
Thank you.
Consent calendar, it has, remember item 10A?
I'll move it.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing no opposition, it's approved unanimously. Item number 11, we're accepting the resignation of Dr. Katibee from the planning commission. Do we have an application? Is that why there's an appointment possibility in this motion, in this agenda item?
I was asked to contact a former member, Lori Uberzak. I did receive a call back today. While she'd like to be considered at a later time, she doesn't feel she can accept an appointment at this time, so she suggested, of course, it's up to you that we advertise.
Who's the gentleman that was in here last time? The real estate?
Scott Stockdale. I was unable, I was, I didn't get to contact him, but.
We should probably at least reach out to him and allow him to reapply.
Can we, can we appoint someone without their permission?
I believe we, we have somebody here interested in.
I believe we, we have somebody here interested in appointment, so I don't know if-
Oh, maybe they can move up to planning.
I don't think that's appropriate, I, I think we need to advertise.
Well, meaning they need to advertise it, but at least they're aware of it.
Yes.
I think we need to do the same thing we've always done and, and interview potential candidates, so. I, I'm, if that's a motion I need to make, I'll make a motion that we declare vacancy and direct Madam Clerk to advertise for it.
Okay, motion and second, further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. We have the 2016 meeting scheduled. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in the past, you have determined to have one meeting per month, but to reserve the first meeting of the month and to reserve the fourth meeting in case it was needed. We had in previous years met on the fourth Tuesday in July and August and we found that the last few years that didn't exactly work. So we have scheduled the meetings all for the second Tuesday of each month. We are certainly open to any modifications of this schedule. So if you know of something that needs to be modified at this time, we can do that. Otherwise, we can modify on an ongoing basis.
I, I know, we're pretty flexible in being able to change things, so I, I, I don't know if it requires a motion, but I think we just accept this and move forward and deal with it as it comes.
Is there a second for that? That was a motion.
Do we need a motion or is it an informational item?
Well, I think we have to set our own schedule. Yeah. It's a unnecessary second, but appreciated. Yes. Okay, so any further discussion on that? Is there any opposition to the schedule as listed? I hear none, that means it's approved. Are there any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers? We have item 13 and possibly something else.
Yes, I would like to introduce our staff, Shannon Kendall. He's our emergency service coordinator to give us an update, a summary of what happened last Wednesday, the December 2nd.
Again, in response to the unfortunate events of this past Wednesday, city of Loma Linda, our response was to, in support of the university and the city, activate our emergency operations center at 12:45 PM. We activated in anticipation of the city of Loma Linda, the university medical center being impacted by a large volume of, or an increase in vehicle traffic, a large influx of media, and then the potential for the incident being as fluid and dynamic as it was to potentially, you know, increase in size and complexity. So that was our intent in operating, in activating our emergency operations center. As soon as we activated, we immediately notified the San Bernardino County operational area, their emergency operations center, of our activation via our online reporting system known as Web EOC. After which, we implemented a lockdown of city hall and senior center. Again, because of the fluid, dynamic situation, these individuals weren't contained. They were actively, you know, roaming and their whereabouts were unknown. So again, taking a proactive approach and locking down the city hall and senior center. We then sent a city liaison, it was our fire marshal, Tim Bradfield, to the Loma Linda University Emergency Center Department Command Center to be our liaison, our conduit of information between the city and, and the university and the hospital. Throughout the duration of the event, we maintained communications with both the San Bernardino County EOC Emergency Operations Center and the Loma Linda University Command Center. We deactivated at the point that they contained, located the individuals and, you know, contained the situation. We deactivated the city EOC at 6:00 PM. The following morning, from 7:00 to 8:00 AM, we conducted an after-action report or review, sometimes referred to as a hot wash, of the incidents in our emergency operations center the following morning with all of the EOC staff that responded to the, to the incident. So in conclusion, that's, that's the timeline of events.
And I would like to thank you, Captain Darcy, for helping us, support us at, at the hospital and through, throughout the city during the incident, thank you.
The other consideration on that, in addition to the operational issues, is also some potential fiscal issues. Although this type of incident is, is new for us. When there are declarations of disaster that affect elements of our community, activating that EOC and getting appropriate data to potentially be in a position to respond if, if reimbursement opportunities were to ever open in, in a disastrous type of incident. We basically left that opportunity open, we created that opportunity for ourselves. And if it were extended to private business, then the LEUAS organization. So that was an additional consideration in that matter. I don't know, that'll, that will be the case. This is again in chartered territory, so we'll see where that goes. But if the county and the state did take that action, we would now be in position to pursue potentially an opportunity there.
Thank you very much for that.
Real quick, I wanted to just kind of piggyback on that and actually really thank both of our public safety chiefs. I know Captain Dorsey was one of the first people responded down there. He was, I mean, just like one of his troops, he was in the middle of everything and that, that deserves recognition. Along with Chief Bender, who also responded out there and helped with a couple of things. And I think he even got some law enforcement envy, was blocking some roads and doing some other things for him, too, but- Right. We had a great opportunity to sit later on that night and talk about the events and, and our, our firefighters from, from here, from Loma Linda and from Colton that responded as first responders and, and talking about some of the stuff they experienced and went through. So it was a pretty interesting thing and it really did affect our city quite a bit. As you know, subsequent calls and threats and kooks, it all came out afterwards. It, it taxed, they're already really thin resources in San Bernardino, working that by having to come over and, and handle those things and treat them as if they were potentially real. And, and we appreciate all of that. As a resident, as a member of this council, I appreciate both you and I thank you very much for your service.
I have one more announcement.
Okay, go ahead.
Every year, the city staff have adopted a family program where we select a family from, a needed family from a local elementary school. And this year, we have our staff, Sonia, here. She's a member of PTA at the Mission Elementary School. And she worked with the parents and the principal at the school and selected three families who are in need of our help. These three families have, have total of thirteen kids. Some are adopted kids and foster kids, the age between two years old and fifteen years old. Where the staff donate money and pay it to the city finance, where this funding is, is tax deductible donation. And the staff will provide them with dinner, similar to Thanksgiving dinner, with Christmas dinner. And the staff will go purchase the, the toy and clothing for this kid. So I want to let you know that we are doing this this year.
We're also getting closer to the 20th and 21st of December. So on the south side of the city, on the Sunday, the 20th, if you hear some commotion, see law enforcement and, and fire vehicles hauling Santa Claus, don't be surprised. And you may want to collect your kids and go out and welcome Christmas. And the north side of the city on the 21st, so we're getting closer to those dates, so keep that in mind.
And also, Mayor, if I may-
Yes.
Did you know there was another bomb threat at the hospital again today? I've been told via a text message that we have that subject in custody with the telephone he utilized, so.
Wow.
That is good news.
There was a... I guess there were fewer cars involved than the last.
We had a couple people there.
Yeah.
Us or suspects.
Not four hundred cars like the last one.
Yeah, not four.
Okay. Good work, okay. That brings the city council to a close. We're adjourned and we'll go back to our begun housing authority, but we need to finish the job. Are there any items to be added or deleted to that agenda?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any non-agenda items on the housing authority? Hearing none, we go to the consent calendar. Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, the chairman and member reports. Any reports of officers? Then we're adjourned. The last agenda we have is the successor agency to the Loma Linda redevelopment agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? No takers, the consent calendar. Is there a second? Having been duly seconded, is there any opposition to the consent calendar? Hearing none, it's approved, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming and Merry Christmas. Happy holidays, happy festivus, happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, anything you want to celebrate?